Any permission to order roll call, please?
Oh, this is a little harder here. Commissioner Orsi.
Here.
Is Commissioner Scobie here? Vice Chair Durtowski.
Here.
Chair Starbuck.
Here.
Commissioner Norman.
Here.
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Pressler. She's here. So.
I'm here.
Perfect. I think Catherine is the only one missing, and if she joins, we'll let everyone know.
All right. Well, welcome Bill back to the pond, please.
Thank you.
And now we'll have roll call. Oh, we have consent agenda. Any corrections, comments on the consent agenda? Motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Motion in second to approve this consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you.
Aye.
Public comments from the public on any item not on the agenda, limited to five minutes each. To comment in person, please sign in and return form to the clerk. If participating via Zoom, raise your hand at the beginning of the public comment period. Public comments and information provided during the meeting will be collected and retained by the city as a public record in accordance with Oregon revised statutes, public recording policy. Okay. One.
Some numbers.
192.005 to 192.170 and 357.805 to 357.895 with some exceptions. All right. Any public comment?
Darcy Graehack.
Okay, then I can comment on Johnson Creek now, or I don't have to wait until, or is it on the agenda and I should talk then?
It's not on the agenda.
Okay, so I definitely want. So on October 7th, my name is Darcy Graehack. I live at 53701 Beach Loop. Lived in Bandon for 35 years, born in Oregon, raised in Oregon. I'm a master naturalist, and I have a lot of connections to scientists. So I'm very concerned that on October 7th, the city council approved Johnson Creek as a natural area to accept that boundary and that that was a natural area. And now I've seen through, somebody sent me an email, that some kind of code amendment has been sent to the city council and they sent it to you guys about moving the natural resource line at Johnson Creek drainage basin to accommodate 25 houses instead of the original application. Is everybody familiar with what I'm talking about?
So I'm just going to clarify that this is, I just, just so you're aware, the item that they're talking about, you're talking about the Ocean Terrace rezone, and that is a work session item they'll talk about. If you want your public comment to be considered as part of the record, the public hearing is on the 24th.
I'll be there too.
Okay, so I just want to make sure.
I just want to make sure that you guys are aware that a lot of citizens, a lot of local people really care about this property. And it's, that's what it is now, it's a natural property. Before that, a whole lot of Gulf people cared about it. And before that, a whole lot of Native Americans cared about it. I am Lakota. I'm not a local tribe, but my heart is really close to the watersheds. My mom was born at Standing Rock, so Niwakoni, we protect the water, right? So thank you for the opportunity to speak. I really appreciate that regarding an application to the planning commission to rezone that section to which Dana referred, moving it from natural resources to residential one. I do not believe that this matter has been given the respect and attention it deserves. Maybe at the work session that will happen, considering the immense regard for our citizens for this piece of property. A code amendment memo was what the city council received a few weeks ago. That was their introduction to what was happening. Memo. Regarding a very important decision about a boundary line of the Johnson Creek drainage basin, the impact of a wrong decision warrants much more thorough investigation of this proposed determination. The area in question is a sandy uplifted bluff that seeps water as much of Johnson Creek is. Although sandy, old sand dunes is what we're talking about. It is not the basalt bluffs like at Kokea Point and other hard places where it's volcanic rock. This is a very malleable place. Groundwater and often rain are the water that constantly moves through this ground and down to the creek, which is at the foot of a very steep bluff. This is not a stable area, and with the vegetation removed, the root zone is absolutely no help. Wondering about who set that line, I believe it was someone with an education about such matters that was clearly exercising caution to have set the natural resource boundary back from the edge. With the atmospheric rivers that are our new normal, even the current edge could be compromised. This is an unstable slope, and when it begins to erode, it will drop soil and debris into the creek. Even without erosion, the fertilizers and chemicals used on lawns and landscapes of the proposed 25 houses in this development will contribute to something called non-point source pollution. Our Oregon coast is known for this sort of pollution. The fact that the city uses this creek and other creeks as stormwater channels delivered into the ocean on the west side of Beach Loop is not a best practice. I believe that the city in fact should be guarding and enhancing the services that Johnson Creek delivers. Please protect the existing boundary. Did you call time?
Yes, I'm calling.
Oh, oh, oh.
Keep going.
So I, as I said, I believe the city in fact should be guarding and enhancing the services that Johnson Creek delivers. Now, it cleans the water before it gets to the ocean if everything's right. Then the drainage that comes from that Seabird neighborhood, that's incredible amount of drainage. Please protect that existing natural resources boundary line and don't start chipping away. Don't set a precedent and start chipping away at the natural resources boundary of this gem of a creek that provides so many eco services already. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I also have someone on Zoom raising their hand.
My name is Dallas Walker. I live at 731 Seacrest.
Can you pay any chance to come up here? The microphone is just really.
And I didn't hear your name.
Darcy.
Darcy. I really appreciate it. Echoed everything that my senators wanted to say. But I live at 731 Seacrest Drive, and it's so put in simple format, it's what Darcy says, is the whole back of the yards on Seacrest Drive, I think the city's aware of, is the way it's been built. It all floods in their backyard. So I've hand dug ditches and bought the whole winter time of water trying to stay out of my backyard now from underneath a house. So that would be a major concern. And I feel with all the, all the homes in there, I don't know how the drainage systems can actually handle all that too as well. And building the houses back there, it mentioned, I think it was mentioned somewhere along the line, that would also help with the adequate housing, which I feel doesn't because those would be the more expensive homes. If you want adequate housing in Bandon, it has to be a lower price scale, which we're obviously aware of. And as well as the traffic. The traffic between, there's plans for apartment complexes, the 80 homes, and then the hotel will be going in in probably a couple of years. I don't know how the traffic's been handled back going out from Seabird to 101. That's a death trap out there. It's a close call as well as a bad accident there. That's all I wanted to mention. My wife mentioned about the housing is the one she'll show you a picture of that she's going to leave with you. But this house that I'm concerned of, if it was my house, it was probably worth $500 plus thousand dollars. Now, the house that you'll see that they built, I feel it was on wetlands. They had to raise it up, which they got permission to run drainage underneath it. It over towers the next house and actually looks down right into that. And I'd say as a homeowner, they lost major equity in that house. So that's another concern of us. We've got an investment in there and we'd hate to see it destroyed. As well as the community, the place, the very desirable, beautiful area in Bandon. And it'd be nice to see Bandon's community that all of us are proud of, that the area would continue to look really nice and respectful and desirable as ones come in and tourists and people spend money. That's what we talked about. So thanks for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
I just want to make a comment too because I think there's a bunch of people on Zoom. We're going to get to the people in the room first and then we'll hop over to Zoom if that works.
Thank you.
That almost seems like we coordinated this whole thing. It was a great jump off. I'm sort of being brought in. I'm going back from work a lot.
I can direct your comments, please. Just sorry, just direct your comments to the planning.
Okay. I'm still driving back to California, taking care of an elderly parent and trying to keep up with all this. So everything that was stated is factual, and then also the flooding is a big issue. And there's many of our neighbors that weren't able to be here, but we will, they will also be at the other meeting. But for me, I started wondering what the major plan is. Like, have any of you driven on Lincoln in the 3000 block? So who would I show these pictures to?
The planning commission.
Okay. Which one is that?
That's all of them. Oh, so sorry, the planning commission is here. The commissioners were online.
So how about I just start carrying and pass it down?
Sure.
But there is a nice, beautiful cul-de-sac, and then there were destructive wetlands. And somebody got permission to build there, and they were told they had to bring in sand because of the wetland. What did that create? A monstrositous house tucked in and basically cut off everyone. It was basically looking in to everybody's backyard. Everyone is starting to try to put for sale signs up. And I'm like, oh my God, is that's what's going to happen behind us, that they're going to understand that they cannot build on that edge? So all the builder's going to do is move everything back to where we've now got a house that had to bring sand in and is looming over all of us, which reduces all of our sale prices aside from the view and takes away from quality of life. It's impacting our life savings that we have all on this street, put our money into, or primarily retirement community by, with the sand that was brought in with this house, literally it's like higher than three stories. And one of the ladies there is in tears because it's like, who gave thought to this? What's the plan? Like, are you looking at how the houses are being thrown together and every little nook and cranny without any thought as to the presentation and quality of life of other people around? It can't just be about the one builder and the one piece of property. It has to have an overall picture and aesthetics and fit with the plan of Bandon, which I have to be honest, I don't know what the plan is because every corner I turn now, there seems to be buildings going up. And so I'm kind of like, wow, is this going to be a San Jose where it's a bedroom community? And everybody's just going to stick things in every nook and cranny? But ideally, having to bring sand in because of its wetlands, that's a problem right there. And then pushing houses further closer to the other houses so that this builder can have houses takes away from the rest of us who have put our life's investment into having this property and pouring sand up to have a three-story house looming in your backyard that you just paid thousands of dollars to lay a foundation on. So, so my concern is all of the, what you heard from all of us, it's like, what, what thought is going into this planning that these houses are being crammed in and sand being brought in and you're taking away the aesthetics and the safety of the neighbors around? Water is a big issue. We've all had to have our builders back out, redid, relit because of the water just draining off. And it's actually the access road back there now is flooded. So anyway, thank you very much. And we will see you at the next meeting because we are not giving up.
And maybe we keep the photos that you submitted. Why we keep the photos that you submitted?
Absolutely, because I have them on file. It's on Lincoln, the one where they brought the sand.
On the 3000 block.
Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty big.
All right, we can actually press.
Okay, the first person I have is Cam. Cam, you're up.
All right, please.
Okay, my name is Kami Bionis. I live on Natalie Way, so that's about a half a mile from the subject land. I'm speaking against the proposed rezone of land in the Ocean Terrace subdivision. The city's planning department memo states, based on the actual site conditions, it appears this natural resource zoning may be a mapping error. I was on the actual site and walked the area zoned NR, and I don't believe the designation was arbitrary or a mapping error. This location is where Johnson Creek actually butts right up to the bottom of the bluff, unlike downstream where the creek moves away from the bluff. The slope is moderate to steep and the ground is very spongy. I don't know how many planning commissioners or staff have been onsite, but I'm really surprised you would consider this a mapping error. The natural resource zoning here complies with Oregon Administrative Rule 3500810600 related to erosion and landside buffers. Protection of natural resources is consistent with both Oregon Goal 5 related to wetlands and the city's comp plan policy to protect water quality and natural areas. That policy also requires review of any development proposal that could impact a wetland with appropriate state and federal agencies. I didn't see any mention of that review in the city's memo. Rezoning the land would not comply with Housing Goal 10 as it would not ensure aesthetics and protection of the natural environment. City land is adjacent to the subject property. Johnson Creek Greenway is the only city park land I'm aware of south of Seabird Drive. The Greenway has an active Friends group who've been planting native species and looking for ways to support the city regarding maintenance and enhancements. Johnson Creek Greenway has the potential for walking trails, bird watching, and environmental education, not to mention the more general benefits of stormwater runoff and scenic open space. If the city property were owned by a private entity, I bet that person would be staunchly opposed to this rezone as it poses a direct threat to the Johnson Creek property. I don't understand what the city gains by approving 15 homes here instead of 10. And I hear somebody mention 25. I sure hope that's not true. I thought it went from, from 10 to 15. That would be an increase of more than 30% of impermeable surface that would likely negatively impact Johnson Creek water quality. There's no workforce housing being proposed. I think it's doubtful the homes will be priced within reach of families just starting out. There'll be additional strain on utility services, which the city has said are in the red, and increased impacts to traffic at the already dangerous intersection of Seabird and Highway 101. In summary, I urge all planning commissioners to uphold protection of Johnson Creek by retaining the natural resource zone here. If the city approves the rezone and the slope fails, the financial burden will be on the city, not the developer. All the information at hand points to this area being intentionally zoned, natural resource, in order to protect slope integrity, avoid landslides, and protect Johnson Creek. Please do your duty and oppose this rezone. Thank you.
And I just want to be clear again, this is not a public hearing. This is a work session. So your comments should, if you want the ability to appeal, you'll need to bring them up during the public hearing.
Next.
The next person I have is Bob Morrow. Taking a second to unmute himself. Your eye could be there now.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Bob Morrow, and I live in Bandon. And I recognize that this is just a working session, but I want to talk about the natural resource zone and the city's decision. So I purchased my home in Ocean Terrace subdivision at the corner of Spyglass Drive and Windcrest Drive a year and a half ago, moving there from Langloix. Tonight, I am here to express my deep concern over the city council's recent decision to allow the developer an additional five homes beyond the 10 already approved, a move that prioritizes short-term gain over responsible planning. While the planning commission, you, will later this month take up the issue of rezoning natural resource area to residential one. It is critical to recognize that the council has already set a troubling precedent by approving even smaller lots in a sensitive area. One of the most alarming aspects of this decision is the dismissive attitude towards the natural resource designation. The developer has suggested that the existing boundary drawn back from the bluff rather than at its very edge was, quote, "simply a drafting exercise" and should instead be rezoned as R1. This cavalier approach raises serious concerns. If zoning designations can be reinterpreted so casually, what safeguards remain to protect our natural areas? Couldn't this become access to Johnson Creek for residents of the Ocean Terrace subdivision? Beyond the environmental impact, this decision potential to drastically alter the original vision for Ocean Terrace as expressed in the current CCRs. When I purchased my home, I was told that the bluff to the south would feature four large lots with custom homes, creating a high-value, well-integrated addition to the community. Instead, we now see a rapid shift towards higher-density tract housing that increases fire risk and erodes the character of the area. Worse yet, public notification about these changes has been inadequate. Only residents within 100 feet were formally notified in December, despite the fact that every home in the Ocean Terrace subdivision will be impacted. The city council's approach has sidelined many affected residents, leaving them unaware of changes to their neighborhood. I only learned about this madness a week ago. This lack of transparency raises broader questions about infrastructure and planning. Has there been a thorough traffic study, especially considering the additional, I'm told it's 80 homes just north of Salty Dog Drive? The intersection of Seabird and Highway 101 has already seen severe accidents recently. Who will be responsible for necessary safety improvements? Did the council negotiate with the developers so they could cover the cost of the traffic signal? What about the impact on our water pressure, our sewer capacity, and our storm drainage? New homes on Lincoln and Spinnaker Drive now have water intrusion in their crawl spaces. How will additional hard surfaces compound this issue and runoff to Johnson Creek? Has the Kokea Indian Tribe been consulted about the erosion of natural resource protections in the Johnson Creek watershed? Will there be meaningful access from the bluff to Johnson Creek Park for Ocean Terrace residents? Or is it just simply a high-density development without community integration? At its core, this is not just about rezoning a small portion of land. It's about the city council's willingness to disregard long-term planning principles in favor of short-term construction permits. Four custom homes on large lots overlooking a park would have added value to the city, contributing as much in tax revenue as oceanfront properties while preserving the area's natural integrity. Instead, we are moving towards dense housing squeezed over ever smaller parcels without clear answers about infrastructure, safety, or environmental impact. Just because you can make these changes does not mean that you should. While the planning commission will soon take up this latest rezoning request, I urge everyone involved to step back and ask, is this truly the best path forward for Bandon? Does this decision reflect the thoughtful, community-oriented vision we want for our town? Or is it simply the result of a process where critical questions?
Five minutes is up.
Okay. Thank you for considering this, and thank you for your time.
Pardon, the microphone is not being. CRST4, your turn.
Thank you. My name's Christopher Snell. I live at 675 Seacrest, which directly overlooks the property in question. I was one of the original people that were notified being within 100 feet. We were given a limited time to respond to the proposed development, and a number of concerns were raised by myself and other residents in the area, most of which were passed over by the planning commissioner as being irrelevant or not part of their purview. The one outstanding element was this rezone change, which requires a type III or a type IV review, which I understand will be on the docket soon. As people have mentioned, the developers said that they thought it was a mistake. I find that highly unlikely, given that all that space is designated an open space area in the oldest Bandon comprehensive plan that I can find. I assume that when the developers bought the land that they're now proposing to develop, it was designated either open space or a natural resource. When I bought my property, it overlooked the natural resource area, and now I found that it's going to overlook three homes at least within my direct line of vision. I've submitted an eight-page document to the planning commission with photographs and my own amateur surveying. The bluff in that area is very, very fragile. It's almost vertical slope, and Johnson Creek runs up right to the base of the bluff. I feel it might actually contravene some of the municipal requirements with regard to riparian corridors. The bluff area, the whole of the bluff area is considered a hazard zone. The developers indicated that they have a self-imposed condition where they don't build or put properties within 50 feet of the bluff area. And then they put a proposed plat out there with hypothesized housing footprints. Most of those housing footprints were located on the bluff edge itself. That they argue that the lots are oversized. Well, in fact, they're not because most of that lot area is slope running down to the Johnson Creek wetlands. I'm a little concerned that this is going to be railroaded through without adequate consideration. The line as it currently exists appears to follow a contour line. And that's 10 feet higher than a secondary grade drop that then goes on to the, to the very steep slope down to the bluff. It's not only going to be dangerous, it's also going to be a threat to Johnson Creek. I'm not sure that the area will be able to handle the runoff completely. And, and I'm also concerned that if a developer chooses to request a rezone from natural resource to R1, it needs some serious consideration. It's not a matter of accusing the planning department of making mistakes and hoping that they'll roll over. That there's people to be considered here. There's environment to be considered. That the riparian corridors, that there are Oregon state rules and regulations about riparian corridors that I feel may not be followed here. I want the planning department to really do their due diligence, be honest, and come out and look at the area. Because although the builders say they surveyed the area, I overlook it, and whatever surveying they did was cursory. There was no accurate measurements made. Supposedly riparian corridors are supposed to be plotted, and there should be plans available. We've not seen those. They've not been put out to people. Did I hear that the public hearing has been scheduled?
That's correct.
Have people within 250 feet of the development been notified of that public hearing?
Second.
Yes, I'll go over that in my presentation.
So please, anybody out there who would like a copy of my eight-page document, complete with photographs, I'm happy to provide it, crst4s@gmail.com. Or you can contact Darcy, and Darcy has a copy. She can forward it to you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
No one else can do it, but I will.
Any other? All right, we'll move along. Thank you for your comments. Uh, one brief statement, the Planning Commission has not been, uh, appraised of this yet. It's a work session to be scheduled?
The work session is tonight. So, we're doing a work session on all the code amendments tonight that, for the public hearings that are scheduled for April.
All right, so the public hearing is when this is called, go and take place.
That's right.
All right, so moving along, let's start with the, uh, overview of upcoming code amendment public hearing.
Here we go. All right, well, I've got a little presentation for you, a little PowerPoint, um, to just go through the items, so, uh, I will get to this part later, but I did put in my notice that I'm leaving, uh, my position, and I will be done here, uh, in the middle of June, and in an effort to wrap up a number of the items that we started working on, um, we do have four code amendments that we're going to consider at our April meeting that are then scheduled for a city council public hearing, um, later. So, can you go to the next slide? Those four are the floodplain development, um, standards, that was, we'll go through that in a second. Uh, master plan developments, the Ocean Terrace rezone, the, and then housing code updates for duplexes, that one you haven't seen before, but we'll talk about that in a second. Next. I love you. Um, so yes, we have, uh, scheduled public hearings for these items. Notices are up on the city's website if you want to learn more. Um, we did also send out notices for the floodplain development standards, because that requires what's called a Measure 56 notice, so a, a special type of notice goes out, um, when a code, uh, provision potentially limits or prohibits someone's ability to use their property. Um, as a courtesy, because we did already, uh, make a determination about the Ocean Terrace subdivision, we did send out, uh, notice of the rezone to property owners within 250 feet. Um, but again, all these notices are always available on the city's website, 20 days in advance of the first, um, evidentiary hearing, and we do post a notice on the state's Department of, um, or D L T D's website, we have to post notice 35 days in advance. So, you can sign up for notices and get all of those if you are curious about what the city is doing. Yes. Okay, so we'll hop into the floodplain development, um, standards, so this is chapter 15.28. If you, uh, I'll give you a little background in case you did not see our lengthy presentation back in November. Um, if anyone does want more detail on why we're even talking about this, I do encourage you to visit the city's YouTube, um, page and watch that meeting, but, um, FEMA regulates, uh, or, or sets standards, um, for floodplains in the United States. Um, Bandon, city of Bandon, we are the administrators of the, um, the flood insurance program, which FEMA administers, the, the flood insurance. Um, and so it's kind of a, it's an interesting statement where we have to voluntarily comply with their standards. So, we don't really have a choice, it's sort of like, in exchange for offering, uh, flood insurance, we must adopt codes that meet their standards. Um, and, uh, we generally tend to adopt this, the model code that the state of Oregon provides for us. So, that's what we have right now, is a model code that was adopted. Um, years ago, in 2009, there was a lawsuit by the Portland Audubon Society, uh, that, that, uh, opined that the, the way that Oregon implements floodplain development standards, um, is non-compliant with federal law, and specifically the Endangered Species Act. And I'll fast-forward quite some time, or I think it was 2016 or 2017, um, they prepared, uh, what was called a BIOP, a biological opinion, that found, yes, Portland Audubon Society is correct, um, Oregon's model code is non-compliant with the Endangered Species Act. Um, and, so it took a long time to get here, but earlier, or, uh, late last year, we were notified that all jurisdictions in Oregon that have floodplains, um, I think it was like on the western part of Oregon, um, uh, we are required to adopt new standards, and they gave us, um, three options for what they called this pre-implementation compliance measure, which were required to adopt by the end of June. Um, and they, those three choices were to adopt a model code, um, which was pretty strict, to allow a permit-by-permit review with a habitat assessment, and, or to do a moratorium on all new development in a floodplain. So, the, you can go to the next slide, I'm totally talking ahead. Um, so, uh, the city held, um, the city council held a, a meeting, uh, in December, I think, to make this determination, and we chose to do nothing, because the state said if you choose to do nothing, you will just automatically go into this permit-by-permit review process. Fortunately, we haven't had any applications since then, so we haven't had to deal with it, um, but we do also have to start monitoring. Um, so because we have, we are required to adopt something by this June 30th deadline, um, we're putting forward to you continuing on this permit-by-permit path, which appears to be what a lot of cities and counties in Oregon are doing. Um, and the other reason why we didn't make a decision in December is that the information coming out from FEMA was sort of trickling in very slowly, um, and we hadn't really, we hadn't even seen the model code that they wanted us to adopt until the end of November, and we were supposed to adopt it by December 1st. So, um, but the, the code provisions that we're putting, um, forth as part of this ordinance amendment would be the same model code that the states provided us, but for that permit-by-permit path. I think the important thing to note, the big change that was made, um, between maybe when we first talked about this and now, is that the, um, the standards for the habitat assessment were changed to just assume a negative impact. So, initially, they wanted, um, folks to hire biologists to make a determination about whether or not endangered species were affected by, um, by the development. That ended up being, uh, that everyone would have to sort of create these big old documents, and it would be very cumbersome and challenging, and it would be much easier if we would just assume the negative impact, um, on any endangered, that any development is going to have a negative impact on endangered species, and go from there. And the model code has some pretty prescriptive, um, uh, standards, uh, so sort of like the mitigation standards of, if you do this, then you must do this, and you can kind of pick from a list of things. Um, but I will say, and we've said this before in our last public hearing, we don't know what this impact will be, um, on development on vacant land. It seems like it would be much easier to develop or redevelop a property that's already had housing or construction on it of some kind of a building, um, but vacant land is going to be a lot more challenging, because it's hard to mitigate, uh, the impact of something that has no, no impact right now. Um, so the standard that FEMA is, uh, talking about in the model ordinance is this no net loss, so they don't want there to be any net loss of flood storage, habitats, et cetera. So, again, much harder to do if you have a vacant piece of property. So, this is why we sent out a Measure 56 on this one, because it will, uh, or could potentially limit, um, or prohibit development in some way on these properties. Um, and the other thing that I'll mention too on this particular topic is, what we've heard from FEMA is this is not a long-term solution. Um, so this is sort of the interim measure, it's the pre-implementation compliance measure. There will still be a point in time where the city have to select, uh, a more permanent measure, um, and from what I have heard, they're leaning more towards that, the, the model code, um, that is a, uh, a little bit, or, or doesn't allow for as much, um, customization, I guess I could say. Like, the permit-by-permit route does allow for some flexibility and some discretion, the model code is getting much more towards like a black and white standard. Um, they haven't developed that yet, I think we're expecting that to come out in 2027, so this is sort of like a two-year interim measure.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, we're assuming that FEMA is going to still exist in existence.
That's correct.
So, is the state picking this up, or is the state going to echo FEMA?
My understanding is that, um, the federal law right now with Trump and state law, I'm sure that the state government employees would not have wanted to do the amount of work they've been doing for the last year trying to make this happen if they didn't have to, so this is definitely-
What if, what if FEMA doesn't exist in, in-
Yeah.
Pretty much.
I think it's a valid question, and I think, um, we probably would do not, we would not change our code then, unless required to.
Right.
But that would be up to you and the, or you guys and the city council to make a decision on. Um, but all of the documentation and all the assistance we've gotten is from the federal government, not the state.
Well, the state's paying out of it.
They're assisting in the development of the model code. Oregon is kind of unique, so I should say that, um, the, uh, state of Washington was also sued prior to Oregon, and California, I've heard, is behind us. Um, and so Washington has different state laws, right, around housing, um, and just land use in general, and so they were able to adopt the model code pretty easily. Here in Oregon, we found that when they first, uh, presented the model code to us, our housing provisions, our housing, uh, standards are on clear and objective standards, uh, they were in direct conflict with the code that FEMA was giving us. So, the state of Oregon has stepped in to really help make sure that the code has clear and objective standards for housing to the greatest extent possible, um, so that, you know, uh, so that we can be in compliance. I mean, we joked in the beginning of this whole thing, said, well, are we out of compliance with the state, or are we out of compliance with that? Like, what's, what's scarier? And, and so they really are trying to align the process and work together.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
So, the, the temporary, uh, changes instituted by FEMA, which have resulted in a permit-by-permit consideration of their concern. So, this is in force now or not?
Yes, so the city defaulted, because we did not make a decision earlier, into the permit-by-permit approval process. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we haven't had anybody apply.
Oh, they haven't.
Oh, they've done the assessment. Okay, so we did have someone apply, but they do have to submit the assessment. Um, we did, Nikki and I have both attended a training up in Coos Bay, um, where FEMA came down and sort of taught us about how to, um, how to actually help someone figure out how to do a habitat assessment, and for, like, how the city staff determine if accurate or not. Because one of the concerns we've had is, I'm not an expert, I'm not a biologist, um, and, and neither are most people applying for floodplain development permits. So, uh, it's a process that we'll have to work through when we get there. And the city might consider, I'm sure, hiring a professional to review these types of permits. I think that's one sort of unfortunate externality about this, is right now floodplain development permits are free, um, and we encourage people to submit one no matter what, because we want to have as many accurate records as possible of what's happening in the floodplain. Um, if we are forced to review these habitat assessments through this code provision, we're going to have to start charging burden, it's going to take a lot more city staff time, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. We don't know, though, until we'll get the, until we get the first one, really, how long it takes or how long-
And we do have the first one, is that what?
Well, not the assessment yet.
No, no, but-
We got an application, but it's not issued yet.
Okay.
Any other questions? And I, I will say too that all the language for this is up on the city's website, if anyone's, and who's curious. Okay, next slide. All right, we'll go through the master plan development. Um, so a little background on this, uh, we talked about this, I believe, maybe even two years ago, this was an item that was included in our planning department work program to consider. Um, we've had sort of, I, I think, multiple work sessions at this point, sort of talking through the concept of it. Um, after we had that conversation, um, I did do a little bit of, I like to call R&amp;D, but I call it ripoff and duplicate, um, looking through other cities' codes and the model code for this master plan development sort of concept. Um, I think the easiest way to describe it is, uh, right now we have a provision for a planned unit development, which is a type of subdivision where you can, um, like lessen densities in order to protect a wetland, or, uh, have a park or something like that for housing primarily. Um, the master plan development would allow you to incorporate any type of land, so not specific to housing, so just want to be clear, that's sort of the difference between the two. Um, and what we found is that the city's had a planned unit development chapter for uh, quite some time, I think it was amended in 2020 for planning commissioners who were here then. Um, but what we've heard from folks who want to take advantage of that chapter and use it in some way, is that it's really challenging to use, um, it, it is not development-friendly. Um, and so this is another option that allows folks to be a little bit more creative, um, in exchange for a public benefit. And so, I sort of had that prepared, but we did have a list of public benefits that we talked about previously. Um, these were preserving open space, wetlands, areas subject to flooding or hazards, wildlife corridors, landscape features, um, allowing for some sort of innovative planning or creative building design, uh, encouraging housing options that meet a wide range of needs, uh, promoting some sort of transportation efficiency, providing environmentally sustainable development, um, such as, uh, you know, swaying, or, uh, getting away from like the city's hard gray infrastructure to more green infrastructure, which we see a lot of requests for, but we really don't have a process for approving, um, promoting some sort of economic development or diversification of our local economy, um, providing better certainty about character and design. So, I think you guys all know that we have clear and objective standards, we can only apply those to housing projects if someone willingly wanted to put forth that there were, they wanted a specific architectural design or, um, spacing between houses, we could allow that through the, this process. Um, also, our code currently doesn't allow for mixed-use development, which be, would be the incorporation of some sort of commercial development into residential neighborhoods, this code would allow that. And then also, um, one to provide a needed service or facility, um, for an orderly or physically responsible manner. I copied that from a code that mentioned, um, if you wanted to have a sort of hospital district, um, a medical center, um, you could use this code to do something like that. So, I just want you to know that it's sort of more broad than housing, which is the plan and the objective. Um, and, uh, the other part to note about this chapter is we've broken it up into two phases, so there would be sort of phase one, which is a legislative amendment, um, which would mean an actual change to our code, right? It would be an actual chapter where they have zoning standards, and that would go to both the planning department and the city council for approval. So, we did get some concerns, um, when we first brought this item up, that people said, oh, you're bypassing the public process if it's not a condition of immunity, but really we're trying to add in additional public process and not limit ourselves to the 120-day timeframe. Um, legislative amendments, you can take as long as you want to make a decision, you can have as many public hearings as you want to make a decision. Um, so the, the planning commission could, uh, you know, have many meetings with someone, rather than usually what we're limited to is one. Uh, and then the second part of that, so the first phase would be that concept plan that is going through the legislative amendment and going to the planning commission and the city council, and then the second component of it is, um, a detailed development plan. So, that's when they're actually ready to build, and they come up with a plan, and they say, we're going to build this heart first, and here is how we comply with that concept plan. And that would be through a Type II process, that's where staff is reviewing, um, mostly black and white things, but there could be some sort of interpretation, and we do notify people within 100 feet and put that notice on the city's website. Anyone who participates in the decision is able to appeal. So, there's another added layer where people, where there is opportunity to both see what people, what is happening in that master plan development, comment on it, and appeal it up to a higher body if they felt that would be good. Any questions on that?
And, and so with this, um, if someone makes an accusation, uh, they have a much longer period of time in order to act on it, is that correct?
That's, that's correct, so-
Five years or 10 years?
Yes, the concept, I believe it's, the concept plan is valid for five years, so, um, they can sort of get that approval and then come back and do the detailed development plan later. What we heard from folks who do, um, who develop, I, I don't know what a better word for that is, is that it's really expensive to have plans made, and so you want some sort of certainty before you prepare a development, and generally you're not going to have that in that, that sort of phase one concept plan, especially when they're, uh, proposing to do something that is sort of outside of the norm of our black and white code standards. And so they want that sort of certainty through that area plan and through the legislative amendment, and then they would go and get building plans and grading plans and all these sort of other expensive plans that are prepared by professionals. And you probably, I don't know that you need five years to do it, but, uh, at least around here, things tend to take a long time. That's about-
So, so this particular code, if I wanted to, uh, develop a resort, this would be the code I would, I would apply with?
You could apply with this, or, I mean, we just had Gravel Point come through with a conditional use permit, so there's no, I, I think that that's a game that someone would have to decide what's an easier path for them, if they can, I mean, we do this all the time with people, they, they say, here's what I want to do, how, how can I do it? Um, and frequently, if you're going through the, the conditional use permit process, the code standards are pretty clear and dry, there's, are the conditions right for the use to exist, or are there conditions that the planning commission needs to place on the application to make it appropriate? Um, but the sort of basic, um, allowances, uh, code, code provisions are there. The master plan development process is going to take a lot longer, so someone may want to do that if they want to do something that's different, but it's not going to be a quick process, if that makes sense. So, an applicant is, um, has, uh, the city's obligation is- So an applicant is, has, the city's obligation is to do a type three decision within 120 days. They're sort of, they're allowed to have this complete decision within a short timeframe. This, the legislative amendment likely not be a short time. So, sort of trade off there. Is that fair?
I have a question on the five year time period. If someone had an approval of their master plan development and say in two or three years they sold the property, is the approved plan, does that lock the new owner in for that five year period total?
That's a great question, and I think that the answer is yes, and we can make that clear. I mean, once the master plan development is approved, it would run with the property. I mean, it becomes a chapter in the city's code, much like R1 or R2. So it would be almost like re-zoning it. In essence.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do you remind us, Dan, where did this come from?
This came.
Why would the city want to do this?
Gosh, no, it's been two years, so I can't quite remember, but this came up in a work session that we had with the city council. And it may have been when we were going through the change to the application process when we did the Title 16 changes. We, there were a number of things in the model code that we considered adding in that we brought to you and the city council. And we said, here are other things our code doesn't have. Temporary uses, master plan developments, modifications to existing application or permit approvals. I'm sure there are more that I'm forgetting, and this was just one that stuck that we brought up and the city council wanted to include it in that work plan.
Thank you for the reminders, best you're able to.
I know, I'm like, if someone goes back in the minutes and there's a different answer, I apologize, but that's what I'm remembering. Any other questions on this? Okay. So the, the one everyone's very excited about, the ocean terrace rezone. So the city received an application for a 15 lot subdivision. We did already approve the tentative subdivision plan, want to give the city council some cover. That was not them, that was the planning department. And it is standard for us to notify only people within 100 feet because it is a type two decision. In Oregon, again, you're only allowed to apply clear and objective standards to housing or projects that involve housing, that's a state law, that's not really our choice. We can't take into account anything other than what is listed in our code. And I'll just clarify too, that that decision has already been made. The subdivision tentative plan is, has been approved and the appeal process has ended. But one of the other things the applicant submitted for was a rezone for part of the property from natural resources to R1. And I had a conversation with this property owner, the representative of the property owner. And we could not determine exactly why the line was drawn the way that it is because I could not find any of the detail. The conversation, I couldn't figure out when the map was changed and when that decision was made. And so frequently, when that happens, I don't feel like a comfortable decision maker. I don't want to be the one making that determination. You all as the planning commission and the city council, right, have the authority to make decisions like this. And so we are bringing it to you because someone has applied for it. I just want to make that part very clear, it's not being railroaded through or, you know, we're not pushing it in any way other than we received the application, we bring it to you as recommending body and then decision makers. So make that part really clear. The applicant provided the detail to me that the total project area is about 6.62 acres. The area, the top of bank is 2.31 acres and they are requesting to return to the R1 zone, 0.67 acres. So it's not a huge amount of land. I'm still waiting on a little bit more information and you'll see my staff report a week in advance of the first public hearing, just so you know. I did also look at the map. The city's riparian zone requires a 100 foot corridor centered on Johnson Creek. So that would be an area that you couldn't develop in. And from the map that we have, the 50 feet from the center line of that creek does not go into the area that they're asking to be rezoned from. Can you go? I've just got some pictures for you to kind of cue you into like where this is. So this is the property itself. You can't really tell, but it's the, the green part on the bottom, I should have outlined it, and then that section that is natural. So the green part is R1 and the brown part is natural resources. And then the Johnson Creek property is the one that's sort of south of that black line, the thinner black. Moving to the next one. And this is what we're up against, just so people know. This is our comprehensive plan map that was created long before Seabird or any of that existed. So we've got this kind of blocky, rainy map that makes it hard for us to figure out what was this designated as. As best as I can tell, the property is actually partially R or urban residential when I looked at it on there. And then there is a section of that open space. We can try to do a sort of overlay, so I think that would be really helpful for you all to see, but just want you to know that it is really hard for us to figure out what the actual comprehensive plan designation is for this property.
Did I have a question, if I can interject? When the, when the applicant purchased the property, was he or she aware that it was, this section was zoned in R1?
I, for that question, I know that the current property owner has owned this for a number of years. It's not a new property owner and I don't know when the property was rezoned or when it was purchased, but I can find out.
Thank you.
Yeah. Excuse me, I was just, sorry.
So at this point, one moment, where we stand right now, the subdivision plot has been approved for 15 homes.
Yes, 15 lots.
15 lots. And in order to do that approval, did that require any sort of geologic survey or soil testing or anything like that?
No, because it's already zoned R1 and the property could, or the, the houses could fit on the land that's existing. It had buildable land. So the geologic assessment review is only required at the time of construction. So we, if it is in a hazard zone, if, if there is high or very high landslide susceptibility, my recollection, and I can pull that up for an extent, is that only the bluff area, like the actual bluff part is in that GAR where the houses are, would be closer to the road. It's not in that zone. But I have a picture of that.
I assume, I assume that you are, the fiasco and gene, I think it's the boomout subdivision, with three houses slid, have slid. Only ones who were sliding all the way down, they secured the other two on either side. But these homes are a mess.
Yeah.
And I believe they were all zoned R1 and, but apparently the soil is figured in such a way that it allowed for this to happen. And of course, I guess the developer has maybe, has been taking some responsibility for this, but everybody's in denial that this wasn't a buildable lot. And so anyway, I get really concerned when we're talking about sand and wetlands and all kinds of stuff like that. I mean, why would you want to build there to begin with?
Sure. I, I think I have a couple comments on that. One, did you see that they held the door shut with duct tape on that house? It started falling apart as I mentioned the duct tape was dropped. It is one of the finest pictures I've ever seen. But two, I'll say that, that we, we run across this a lot with the hazard overlay zone. I would think that if I were making an investment of a brand new house, I would want to know what the soil is doing underneath me. Because what we've seen in Bandon, and as people mentioned, whether or not you're in a wetland, you probably have really wet land. It's really wet here. And we have heard from lots of contractors that even if they don't, they have just, you know, soil that, that doesn't have a wetland on it, they'll frequently excavate out and put in some sort of structural fill because Bandon is just really wet. And so we can only, our code can only require that hazard or the geologic assessment review if there's that high or very high landslide susceptibility. And what we'll often also see is geotags will, there's an exemption, but if a geotech tells you there is no high or very high landslide susceptibility, even if it's mapped on our map as having that, they can get an exemption for that. So that's really a property owner taking on that liability and that engineer taking on the liability, saying that there's nothing there. But I, I mean, I would be lying if I said I didn't worry about some things that we see being built up there. You know, around here too, houses are built a lot of times on helical piles or more complicated foundations because of the conditions that we have here on the coast. And I do believe also on the coast, the building code standards changed in 2022 or 2023 because of our high winds. So houses are built a little sturdier here, but I think it's a very valid concern to have. I'm not sure how we, with our code, like, we can't regulate good decision making all the time and I think that that's, that's a challenge. But I think it's worth thinking about or discussing during the rezone public hearings. So I will make sure to provide some information. And if I can get the applicant to submit anything that they have about soil, if they've done anything with that, I will, I will bring that to you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Dan?
Yes.
I think, considering that this is so volatile, I think we ought to do a site visit.
Okay.
So we just scheduled a site visit. Not on a Monday or Thursday.
Okay, on a Tuesday or a Wednesday. Okay.
On a Tuesday.
Not Tuesday? Okay, only on a Wednesday.
Can you just point out?
This is making it easier for me. Or to fall to be short.
That many of us do site visits. As a normal course of action learning application.
Well, we need to do a site visit as a group.
And if you've already done it, you don't have to come, but the rest of us will be there.
But I think walking the property would be good.
Sure, we can do that.
Right, I have visited the site, but not, haven't walked it.
I'm happy to have Nikki admit that. Perfect.
I have one more question, I still don't understand why the applicant feels this may be a mapping error.
I shouldn't, sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I just don't understand based on what I'm reading and seeing. I mean, I, why someone has determined it may be a mapping error, mapping error.
I, I wish that I had the larger zoning map to zoom out, but there are some other errors in this area. I'll bring them to you next time where the zoning map is pretty normal and then all of a sudden it has these kind of jerky lines. So I think it's not completely outrageous that, that it could be possible. I think also their assertion is that the line seems to follow the line of the bluff and then sort of suddenly drops upward. Because I couldn't find the history of this particular change because it did happen at some point, we just wanted to give the benefit of the doubt that that's an argument that they can make before you.
Yeah, you know, based. I think, I think based on a lot of the comments from our public, is there not some sort of a report by a third party that the city can mandate the applicant provide? That talks about issues such as the stability of the slope and the possible drainage into Johnson Creek. It's, unfortunately, if something goes south, you know, the developer and or the engineer and or the house owner, I don't see them mitigating catastrophe that might happen in Johnson Creek if we allow the, the development to move forward on it. That's just a thought.
I think that the city is under no obligation to approve a zone change that's requested by an applicant. But I think it's, it's fair to consider their request. So if they, if that's something that you want to ask them to provide, then I think, and again, you can have as many public hearings as you want before you pass this item along to the city council. If you want to ask for more information at that public hearing, you may do so. And I can see what information I can get before then, but to submit and have available at that public hearing.
Yeah, I don't think we'll get a reputable company to perform a report like this in a couple of weeks, but.
They may have the information already available, I, I don't know. But I'm happy to reach out and see what, what there is.
Good, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, I just have one more image of it. This was what they had submitted that just sort of shows the top of bank, the property boundary and then the requested area of rezone. And again, we'll have more of this information in the staff report in greater detail for you.
And this rezone line, that's moving up above the bluff, is that correct?
So the, I'm going to stand up for a second. So this is the current rezone, or this is the current line between R1 and natural resources. This is the current top of bank here and this is the property line. So they're requesting to move the line from R1 and natural resources to match the top of bank. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Yeah. So that's, it's moving down.
We need to see, we need to see this.
Yeah.
For those that haven't gone out there.
Yeah, we can go visit this, we will organize that for you. Okay. Thank you, that was very helpful. Okay, and I think this is the last one. So the city received some grant funding from the Department of Land Conservation and Development to do a housing code audit and update. The audit portion has already begun. What they're doing is they're looking through our code to find out, find anything that is non-compliant with state law. And we know that a lot of laws have changed recently, especially related to housing. We likely have kept up with all of them, we've tried. And one of them that we recognized pretty early that we had to come into compliance with was this Houseville 3395 that required cities to have standards for duplexes. That requirement again is, we have to have something in place by June 30th, which is the sort of suddenness of this ordinance coming before you and the timing of it with all these other things. June 30th seems to be a very popular date to have everything done by, so. We have, there's some substantive changes in here. I have included the redline version for you in this packet, but we have to change duplexes from conditional uses to outward permitted. That shouldn't be a big surprise to anybody. We've already been treating them like they're outward permitted, but we just have to change the code language to match that. That's because of the ORS standards are unclear and objective. Standards, we also have to reduce duplex, the lot sizes for duplexes to match that of a single family dwelling. So they're saying that anywhere you can have a single family dwelling on 5,400 square feet, which is our minimum lot size, we now also have to allow duplexes on that same sized lot. So that would be, again, anywhere where we outward permit, single family. I think that's going to be a little bit of a surprise to some folks. We also have to update the design standards that don't have any sort of like dimensions or definitions, which we've come across before. I know we've always gotten asked, what's a mullion window? What's a clear story window? And I always say, if I can Google it and find what you're doing, then I'm happy to approve it, but there's got to be a better way to do that. And then also the other requirement for housing is we have to reduce off-street parking requirements to one per unit. So right now, I believe our code requires two parking spaces for each single family dwelling and then I think a third if you have a duplex, but now it's just only one per unit. And that's that, and we don't have a choice on that, that's state law.
Do we know why, do we know why the off-street parking requirement the state is mandating only one parking space per unit? If it, if we require two for a single family dwelling and it's on the same lot size?
I don't, I could not get inside the brains of state lawmakers. I wish I could. I would guess, and this has been a common change, they did this, or something similar with, we can no longer require parking for accessory dwelling units either. So I think what they're trying to do is just really limit the cost that could be placed on housing, which would include greeting areas for parking.
And if they reduce the off-street parking requirement for a single family dwelling down to one, then it makes sense if they're making them equal, but what? They need one for you.
Yeah, I guess I would have to double check on the, if we have to go to one or.
I have a question about duplex being in that small of a lot. Are we then anticipating a lot of them will have to be two-story? I, I'm, I'm having two-story. I'm not complaining about that. I'm just asking. Otherwise, I don't know how they're make a duplex, um, that's small of a lot.
Yeah, okay, so I want to answer the one, your other question first. So, single-family can still stay at two spaces. But duplex, instead of doing one-point-five times the number of dwelling units, it's just also two spaces, one space for dwelling unit. So.
I'm confused by the last statement about reduce off-street parking requirements to one per unit.
It's just for duplexes. So duplexes before.
Oh, okay, yeah, I see. I, I now it's two. Now I see what you mean.
But single-family dwellings can stay at two.
Okay.
And what about the multi-family dwelling?
Yeah, that was.
Here it says one-point-five per unit.
Yeah, so multi-family would be anything larger than a duplex.
Right.
Yeah. So then if it's a three-unit structure, then you have to have one-point-five spaces times that three unit, and you always run it. You can't have a parking.
So.
Wait, I can answer Sally's, the second question. Um, I would say there's lots of ways to do duplexes if you think about all the folks who have put in accessory dwelling units. Um, those are two units, right? So you could have a pretty small second unit. It doesn't necessarily have to be like eight units.
Right.
I can only say too, from my experience growing up on the East Coast, there are lots of those sort of like houses that look like a single-family dwelling, but there's two doors and there're two, sort of two standing units on one lot. Um, so it could be upstairs, downstairs, could be side by side. I think there's probably lots of ways to, to make it work. And if you want, I can come up with some images of duplexes next to single-family dwellings, so you can get an idea of what.
And I was thinking, eh, it could be really small units if they're.
That, it could be true, but I, you know, our minimum lot size is fifty-four hundred square feet, but we don't have, I mean, we do have a fair number of lots that are in the five-thousand range, but we also have larger lots. It's just, you know, minimum. But we'll get some images for you. Okay, who's next?
I have a question about, uh, specific to R one versus R two.
Yeah.
So both one and two, duplexes are now allowed along the single-family fifty-four hundred square feet. And then, if you want to go bump it up to a triplex. Um, and in R one, it's a minimum requirement ten thousand five hundred square feet. And in R two, it's nine thousand square feet. What is the difference?
R two is meant to be more dense. So I think also, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think other cities have more numbers, right? They'll have like R five or R whatever, R ten, and it's usually a reference to the, the density of it. Uh, so R one is generally the least dense and then as you go up.
So I can appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
At the same time, you're allowing duplex on what had been a single-family home lot, fifty-four hundred square feet. So you're already increasing density potentially, right?
Mm-hmm.
Why does it, why does it still matter? It, why to have a, to have a different size, I would wonder.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I, um, can tell you that there is a little, I have a little bit of knowledge about what the R two zone was originally created for, which was for mobile home housing. Um, and so you'll notice in the areas where it's, the city currently has R two zoning, it's a lot of mobile homes. That was before the state law changed to say that we have to treat all housing exactly the same. We can't prohibit uh, manufactured or mobile home housing. Um, and so I think it's a really good point. I've frequently said, what's the difference between these two zones? And that's when we made R two slightly more dense. Um, I think also there are some areas of the city that are more historic that have smaller lots, that have kind of more closely, um, developed housing and one of the other code provisions that I can't remember why we didn't pick up. Um, but we did talk about doing a sort of legacy zone, um, for those areas. If you have an art, you might, at, in the future, we never did the legacy zone, but you could consider rezoning those areas to R two to sort of bring them closer to what they were constructed as originally, if that makes sense. We have a lot of properties that are non-conforming to R one. So, you know, R two gives you the opportunity to have smaller lot sizes, smaller, um, or, or more housing types. There may be areas in town that you want more density or not. And you will have this discussion because part of the housing code update um, is to encourage more what they call missing middle housing. Um, and that is like the cottage clusters and duplexes and townhouses and housing types that are current code R one or R two would not permit. So it, you know, you may even look at that later. Okay, sorry, that was long-winded. Anything else?
Anything else? Hey, hold on.
Thanks.
You need a recommendation? No, we're gonna have a hearing on the.
We got hearings.
We are at view one.
Uh, actually, we've got an architectural review overlay zone update.
Okay.
From Solen.
Okay.
She's gonna pull up her presentation. Can you set her power points in? Sorry.
At least I can see the title.
I'll have to remember bigger.
Uh, well, hello, everyone. Uh, I'm going over the architectural review overlay zone update that I have been conducting for the Washington Division meeting, which is now in people. Um, let's see.
Oh, that's great. So you can't see that either.
Oh, that's even more lovely. Um, so that says, what is it?
Oh, there you go.
It seems like there's a way to make that in there. Um, so the ARO zone, the Architectural Overlay Zone Code is used to regulate the design of buildings in Old Town to ensure the cohesion and maintain the identity abandoned. They essentially prescribe what the facades of buildings can look like from color to different architectural elements, you name it, it's technically, and it goes. Um, so what exactly is the end goal of the work that I'm doing right now? Uh, the hope is to have a revised code that clarifies the regulations by removing ambiguous language, making it easier to understand what is allowed and expected from properties within the zone. Uh, currently, the code is, um, how do I explain? Also much forgive me, you know, I'm getting yawning. I'm kind of tired right now. Um.
I think ambiguous is a good word. I'm gonna hop in and say that one of the, the purpose of the zone is to foster civic pride, and you have to make a finding about how you're gonna meet that purpose. And you said, how the heck do you do that? That's a hard finding.
Um, yeah, and. Yeah, so, uh, another end goal hope is the creation of design guide that's gonna accompany the, the code. Uh, and it will provide greater detail on the design standard. Um, and this design guide will be referenced in the code, um, so it'll be working as a joint document, you could say. Um, so what's happened so far? I have assembled an advisory committee. It's a group of six volunteers consisting of business owners and property owners in Old Town, as well as an architect. And they have provided recommendations on the code, um, and provided insight into the future vision of Old Town through mood boards that they created, and they're meeting a couple of months ago, which I'll be talking about a little bit later. And then I also have been conducting some intercept surveys, um, to people in Old Town, just inquiring, um, with people enjoying Old Town about what their opinions are on the architecture and their experience with the area. Just trying to get a sense of how people perceive Old Town from an outside perspective. Um, so when we got to the mood boards, here, this is a example. I tried to take pictures from all of the different boards created to kind of give an idea, but these, I'm passing down, are the board that were created by my lovely committee members. Um, I basically went on to Pinterest, uh, Swondar, and, uh, compiled just a bunch of different photos, um, of different like colorful town colors, architectural features, nineteen-twenty's architecture, landscaping options, plant options, you name it. I made a huge board. And then I printed out all of these pictures and we sat around with blue sticks and tape and these lovely large pieces of paper. And, um, it was very nice. We just basically collaged what you wanted your Old Town to represent. Uh, so this is kind of a composition of what I came up with, with ideas from the boards. And if anyone in the audience wants to take a look at them too, just let me know in all classes, y'all's go. Um, some of the common themes in the mood boards that we deciphered is the planners, we have a weekly meeting, and we sat down with these and kind of tried to pull out what common themes we could find. Um, and these were the most relevant ones out of the scenario. These con, uniqueness, colorful, character, historical, and then engaging and inviting. Um, and then what's happening next from this point forward? I want to hold a work session with the planning department to discuss this code update, um, and get some more insight and feedback from y'all. I also want to hold an open house in Old Town with business owners and other stakeholders to get their opinions. Um, probably in early May, if that makes sense. Um, and then, uh, towards the end of my service term, I'm going to be done here at the end of July. So before that, I want to help propose an ordinance to adopt the code and design guide into abandoned municipal code. And yeah, any questions, comments, queries?
So what I want to say is, uh, looking at your twenty-year boards here, I vote for the abandoned sign to be returned to where it was originally. Street ahead, auto parks, beaches, and beach amusements.
Well, no, I, I wish I could reinstate your architecture, however, I don't have the money, funding, money to do that. Um, but yeah.
I have a question, something I think we should consider in the work session. If we're gonna have a code amendment, and I think one of the items of the code amendment, it was what is expected of properties in Old Town? Um, I think we need to discuss that and how is that expectation enforced? And, and there's some buildings in Old Town that I'm not sure exactly structurally why they're standing, but they still are. But their outward appearance is, um, I, I guess not what I would call historical uh, in any way. And there's some work that needs to be done, especially when it's a main entry into Old Town uh, off of one oh one. The first thing you see is a building that, that looks more like a ghost town than a old town. Anyway, that's just my thought for the work session.
Yeah, I wrote that down, so I will bring that up when that work session comes around.
Thank you.
So this is actually an update.
Yeah.
This is what I've done so far.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just letting y'all know.
Yeah.
What I've been doing and that. Maybe I keep you in the loop.
Let's go to the website.
Um, yeah, I, so it's not on the website yet? I don't know. You wait it out.
Do we, I, we don't have a page for this?
Not yet, no.
We will make one. We can make a page. Usually we put all of our projects under, uh, on the, if you go to the planning department page on the side, there's something that says like long-term planning projects.
We, we have to go with, but I'd be very interested in that.
Yeah.
You know, abandoned, it's fuel efficient, so, yeah. So we respect, we, we gotta leave, sorry about that.
I take no personal notes.
Thank you for your time.
Of course.
And the only other thing I was gonna mention is that Solen's been working, she's done a phenomenal job working with our Old Town business owners, um, and as well as, uh, an actual architect or a designer. So, um, this was one of those projects that I think has been on my list for a long time as a planner. It's really hard to enforce this code. Um, and because it is really only imposed on a very small group of people, we just wanted to make sure they were intimately involved in the crafting or the reimagining of the, the new provisions. And I just want to commend her on the fantastic job she's done, uh, really working with them diligently every month. So, good job.
Thank you.
It's hard to get people to attend meetings, and she is an enjoyable person, so people keep going.
All right, uh, view line.
Okay, I wanted to update you all, and I, um, let Jan hop in too if I miss anything. Um, but we, I thought this was really fun. As a planner, I feel like we rarely get to just sit in a circle and talk about code, which is so dorky, but so fun. Um, so we, uh, at your, um, recommendation and the city council approval, we assembled a work group um, made up of all sorts of people who are affected by, uh, this particular view line ordinance, which for those who are unfamiliar, is a sort of line, imaginary line drawn between houses along the beach loop and, um, up in the sort of clamor and riverside area, um, that protects, we call it an inline view. It keeps all the houses in line to protect views, um, towards the ocean or river. Um, so we asked this group some questions. We said, should we continue to protect views? We knew the answer to that one. Um, is the current language sufficient? How can we protect views from irregular lots, so being of Strawberry Drive or Clamath? Um, and how should staff deal with accessory structures such as fences, sheds, decks, et cetera? What about stairs to the beach? These are all questions that we get frequently in the planning department that we have no idea how to answer. Um, we talked for an hour and a half. It was an amazing discussion from people that I, you know, really rarely get to hear from, so it was really nice to hear from other people. Um, and, uh, I think everyone sort of shared the reason why they were there, and then they shared, uh, it was very constructive. People shared ideas for how to improve this code. And really, I think what we got down to was, what is it that we're trying to protect? Because I think, um, people wanted to make it very clear that they wanted to protect the view that they have now. And, um, one amazing individual of this group looked at every single house that is affected by the view line and found that over fifty percent of the structures, I think it's in the sixties, um, are actually non-conforming. So the view line actually doesn't do anything to protect that their house is out past the view line or the way that the view line is drawn, it really, um, it, it, a lot of times it goes through the house, which was funny because we had people who wanted to add on to their house, like, let's say, a deck to only come in line with the, um, extent of their house. We have to say no because that structure is beyond the view line, but their neighbors are like, that's fine. You're not blocking any view. And so I thought that was really one of the, um, more revolutionary, um, points. And another really interesting point is that the view line doesn't take into account topography. And so someone said, well, if there's stairs down to the beach, but it's down below my view, I don't care. Um, but again, our code is so restrictive that it wouldn't allow that type of thing. Um, so some folks had some ideas for how to draw the build, or the view line, um, including having a minimum building setback. So just sort of saying everyone has to be four feet back from the block. You know, something like that, um, or adopting a map that actually like shows a line. Uh, and we just draw it, so there's no like, there's no question of where that line is or how it's drawn or anything like that. Um, we also talked about having a, a two-part approach, so a type-one approach that is, again, that's a staff decision that's really not appealable except to circuit court, um, that has standards for your primary dwelling. And then a type-two approach for requesting some sort of alternative view line um, or placement of accessory structures. And again, that would get at, if your neighbors are okay with it, if they're not appealing it, then it would be fine to have. Uh, again, this folks would be notified within a hundred feet, uh, which would really get at the folks who are most affected by it. Um, they also encouraged onsite visits from staff making determinations, um, which we really don't do right now, um, because these are type-one decisions or they're meant to be. Um, and so we're, we're not allowed to take into account any sort of, um, human perception. Like, I can't look at something and say, yeah, this view is not affected. I can only go based on what the code says. So I thought that was good job security for whoever takes this job next, you know? Actually, even humans make these determinations. Um, but they did feel that if they're, if a person were to go out and actually see what's happening and a potential, um, impact, that, that, uh, the city might be more willing to approve accessory structures. They also wanted us to consider landscaping, because right now trees and shrubs are, um, not considered structures that, um, so you could, you know, plant a giant sequoia, redwood or whatever is gigantic around here, and, or a stack of willows and blocks on the view, but you can't put in, uh, a raised garden bed. Kind of like, it's an interesting, um, conundrum. So they wanted us to look into that. Um, and, uh, we ended the meeting with deciding that we were going to, um, myself and Commissioner Fressler, um, we're going to sit down and do some code grading and then come back to the group. Um, come back to the group and, and, uh, bring some code options for them to consider before we bring them to you. So this group, this work group is a, and staff. So this group, this work group is in the line of staff and and then we'll ultimately come to you. And Commissioner Pressler, did you wanna say anything else? Did I miss anything?
I think you covered it all.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, my, my, I'm in a hotel and my internet is unstable, so that's why I'm on the, my iPhone and. My computer.
Well, we can hear you just fine, so I hope you're passing us.
So I just had a comment. And we've been tying ourselves up in knots and it was a view line thing for years.
Yes.
And, um. What occurred to me, cause, uh, cause we have this, uh, clear and objective standard that we have to follow. Well, I mean, isn't that a fairly simple thing to do? I can see the water or I can't see the water.
I, uh, would love it if that, it was that easy, but we've been having people who say that the term oceanfront isn't clear and objective. Um, so I mean, whether or not that's true, I don't know, but we, people argue lots of things and so whatever we have, uh, in that type one process. I just want to be really like, I don't want anyone to appeal any decision or or think that it's discretionary. Or that staff have any say in it. Uh, views I've, I've learned are a very sensitive thing. Um, which I understand, people buy property with the expectation that they're going to have a particular view. And when that is disturbed by development next to them or planting a tree. Um, it becomes very personal and we hear about it, I think, more than anyone else. So I, I think that, um, I would love, way with our chief, who's our state rep at D L C D. She always says the best part about zoning is that it gives you certainty, and I think that's what we're trying to do with our type ones. And I don't know that someone's perception of a view, right? It could even be like a tall person and a short person, the view is different. Um, and so I would hate to, I, I did hear, that was funny, someone told me that they lived in a, an H O A. Where like your view is based on how you documented it when you first got there and so you took like pictures of your view. And then no one could obstruct that view, but then, you know, that was, that was the only view you got, so if you missed an area, then someone could. It seems like a very odd process. I don't want anything like that for you guys, because it's gonna get appeal to you if they don't like it.
Okay, so. I can see the water or I can't while I'm on my knees.
Yeah, while I'm rolling around on the ground. Yeah, it's, uh, people love to appeal this, so. It's a good point. Um, I, I will take it under advisement and see if there's a way that we can make it that obvious. Um, but my experience has been that's, it's challenging.
Can I just ask?
Yeah.
The, um, suggestions are going to be able to be translated and is some place is challenging is like a struggle?
I think that's where, um, they wanted to allow for the exception process. So the clear type one, sort of like, here's your line, take it or leave it. And if they want to leave it, then they would, um, come to the city and ask for a different view line. And then all the neighbors would be notified so that they could, you know, anyone who would actually be affected by that construction of that house would be able to appeal that decision.
And second question, I, I do agree that we probably should have considered landscaping a long time ago, but. How would that impact, I mean, people would already have a tree or already have certain things, we just grandfather them or?
Yeah, they become nonconforming uses if they, if you were to adopt something like that.
But if the tree blew down or something, then.
Then you can't replant it.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
But again, I think a lot of the folks who, um, who, who weighed in said, if there's a tree there now. That's fine, because when I bought my house or I bought my property, I knew what that view was. If someone coming in later and planting a hedge or planting a big tree. That is worrisome. It's up to the patient, or Jan. There's, uh, someone who wants to make a comment, but I'll ask it.
Okay, quick.
Well, just history, up until twenty fourteen, landscaping was treated this way in the U B O. Shrubbery had to be at six feet. The man in Escalonia couldn't go to twenty feet. It'd keep everything at six feet. If you had a tree. The tree had to be trimmed up limbs, six feet. And that's how that was included in the.
That would be a very arbitrary standard that is not in the code anywhere, but it, I believe you, so.
Michelle was in the planning department.
Yeah, it, it could have been, uh, the other, I'll say, the other interesting thing about this particular provision. Is that it's really, uh, ambiguous and the only time that we've had a new sort of interpretation has happened from the council. In a resolution from two thousand and one that is like this planning document we keep passing around. Um, but it's not, that's a bad way, I think, of doing planning is having these resolutions or kind of obscure documents. That people from the public don't know about, because you'd want to know when you buy your property, what the rules are, would think. So I think this is also the idea of like, let's get all this stuff about how we interpreted this code into the actual public.
Absolutely.
But that's a great point, six feet. No one would be upset if we did six feet.
And we move on now?
Yeah.
All right.
Starting department before.
Well, um, I have a couple, a couple of updates for you and then I'll pass it over to Solen to talk about C C I stuff. Um, so one of the things that we're continuing to work on is, um, the University of Oregon's student team. Um, they are doing a project on the South Jetty. I did leave surveys back there, so if anyone uses this, the South Jetty and wants to take. On the survey, I think it's like a fifty dollar gift card or something if you participate, so. Um, feel free to do that. What they're looking at is hazards on the jetty, so how well are people who use the jetty? Um, are they acclimated? Are they knowledgeable about what these hazards are, whether it's beach safety, um, tsunamis? Uh, wave overtopping storm surge, all that stuff. So they're looking at that as sort of one component of the jetty. Um, they've done, they've been here onsite a couple of times, met with city staff, the tribe, um, the folks at, uh, Pacific View. Um, they're really just trying to understand the nature of that neighborhood, um, and provide resources to them in the future. And then the other thing that they're doing for us is looking at and working with the port on a path on the north side of Redmond Pond. Um, and helping us come up with some solutions for the issue that we have on Jetty Road. Um, as far as putting a sidewalk in, so that area floods almost every year due to storm surge. And so we're trying to figure out if there are opportunities for the city and the port to sort of work together to come up with, um, a solution that will allow us to put in a permanent pathway. We can't right now because it would get ruined, um, by storms every year, so, uh, they're, they're doing some really cool work. Their final product is gonna be a story map, um, which is an, sort of like lives online, but it allows you to incorporate, um, graphic images, videos. And you sort of scroll through, um, and see a story of things. Uh, they've also reached out to the, um, or I've reached out to the Historical Society. Got a lot of cool photos, so I'm really excited to unveil that project to you. Um, and then the other thing is, I have to apologize because I got the date wrong on the city park. Uh, master plan open house, which caused a big kerfuffle. Um, I even put in here that it was March twenty fourth, but it was actually March twenty sixth. Um, and we, but surprisingly, despite the horrendous weather that started right at five P M, when our things started, it was bad timing. Um, we did have about forty people there. I thought it was a great turnout, um, and we had a really robust conversation about city park. Um, and because of the bad weather and the, um, bad notification about the date of the meeting. Um, we're sort of pivoting to also do an online open house. Um, and so we're working with, we have a new, uh, person working in the planning department. Um, and she's got a robust background in G I S, which is really great. She's been working for the electric department, um, for the past year. So she's helping to put together a sort of online survey, um, which we hope to have out in the next week or so. And the second note is, uh, my bittersweet note news that I am leaving my position. I, I intend to be here through mid-June, so you're not done with me yet. Um, but there is a reason, you know, why we're sort of rapidly going through these code amendments. Um, and it's because I'm trying to not burden my lovely employees with lots of work. And, uh, my job is posted, so if you know of anyone who wants to be the community development director, uh, pass that one. And before I end, I'm gonna pass it over to you to talk about, um.
Two items I had on my updates, it's C C I stuff. Um, the first one was about the, um, open house that we had. No, you're okay, thank you for. Um, and then the second update that I have is that we are assembling an advisory committee for the Banden Housing Code Audit and Update. So if you are someone who has a background in housing, whether it be housing policy, a landlord, a developer, property management. Or anything else under the umbrella of housing, then the professional insight for benefit processing committee. And if you have an interest in being a part of this process, the application is available on the city's website. Under the planning department, long range planning project, and finally, the banned and housing code audit and update. And then I brought some presents for y'all, which is, um, the advertisement post here that I made. And application, you can give it to someone who you know. So that number fly.
Yeah, I think Akron volunteered to be on this, um, ad hoc committee. Uh, but if other planning commissioners are interested, she's the only person and we've been talking about it for months. Um, so we really do need folks to, to join this, um, for this project. I am, will be working with the consultants on the wrapping up the audit component. Um, and so we need, we need to have a meeting sometime before May nineteenth for the housing advisory committee. And then the planning commission and city council, um, are supposed to have a joint, uh, meeting to discuss this on May nineteenth. Is anyone aware of that or? May nineteenth, we've got a work session scheduled for housing audit then. I'll make sure these are done, because if you have.
Maybe it was coming up some day.
Okay.
Just didn't remember.
Yeah.
That is?
That's it.
All right, commissioner comments. Start with Mr. No, no? How about Mr. Page?
Yes, thank you. Um, once again, as usual, thank you, Banden team members, especially the planning department. Uh, and all the participants in person and, uh, on Zoom tonight. Um, and we'll certainly, I'm sure we all agree, we'll certainly miss Dana. But are glad that she's still here for a few more months, and be able to take advantage of our expertise in that time period. Um, and I wanted to thank Dawn, I wanted to thank the port of Banden, I think the, uh, parking. Development outside of Farm and Sea is looking very nice, especially with, it looks like a future planned. I think they're gonna put a, a little green space or a little mini park in there, looks, looks sharp. Think you guys are doing a great job there. And then one final thing to remind commissioners, the statement of economic interest. From the Oregon, uh, Ethics Commission is due by the fifteenth of April, if you already haven't filed that. Or gotten an email about that. And that's it, thank you.
I do not have anything. I look forward to working with Dana on the view line ordinance. I'll be back. I too will miss Dana. Um. I think she has done a great job, uh, for planning, so.
Thanks. Thank you.
I have nothing to add. I want to thank Dana as well. It's been a pleasure to have you. Glad we have you through with the horn. And I'm really happy to be able to join us again. It's nice to have people in the staff and we gather and just, uh. I'll, I'll end there today.
All right, I am speechless, so I will close this session of the Banden Planning Commission.